Good morning all, I will wait a few moments and let everyone fully connect before I get started with our usual introductions. I think I'll start first, Ms. Cott. Are you ready for us to go on the record?
Hi, good morning, I am, thank you.
Thank you, good morning. Then I will go ahead and get started with our usual introductions, which will take just a little bit. So, good morning, it's nice to see all of you again, it's been a little time. It is February 3rd, 2025, and I'm Nicole Kinsey, Presiding Hearing Officer for the Administrative Hearings Office of the State Water Resources Control Board. This is the hearing on the pending petition for assignment of state filed application 25517 and accompanying water right application 25517x01, and the pending request for release from priority of state filed applications 25513, 25514, the unassigned portion of 25517, 22235, 23780, and 23781, in favor of water right application 25517x01 of Sites Project Authority. Today is the first day of the phase of the hearing that will address the incidental take permit issued by the California Department of Fish and Wildlife for the proposed Sites Reservoir Project. This hearing is being conducted by Zoom teleconference and is also being broadcast live on the AHO YouTube channel. If you are not planning to speak today, please do use the YouTube channel for viewing the hearing rather than logging into the Zoom platform. Both the audio and video of this hearing are being recorded and we will post files of this recording in the FTP folder for this proceeding and the YouTube folder, the YouTube recording will also be available on the AHO YouTube webpage. If at any time you are experiencing technical difficulties trying to communicate with us or accessing Zoom, please send an email to the sites email inbox at sites-wr-application@waterboards.ca.gov, or you can also send an email to the usual AHO email inbox and AHO staff are monitoring that email inbox. Ms. Mullen of the AHO will be handling the screen sharing of exhibits today as usual and moving along of any slides. So if you are a witness, you may simply ask Ms. Mullen to advance to the next slide when you're ready during your presentation. And attorneys, you may feel free to ask Ms. Mullen directly to bring up particular exhibits. If at any time I am experiencing technical difficulties during this hearing and I am not able to rejoin the Zoom conference within a few minutes, one of the AHO staff will call a recess until I'm able to rejoin you. As has been our practice, we will take breaks as needed, but generally speaking, we'll have a mid-morning break, a lunch break and so forth, and as I've done in the past, I will hold the hearing to a hard stop at 5:00 PM on our scheduled days. I would like to go ahead and go through appearances because it's been a while since we've been together in the virtual room. So we'll go ahead and go through that and then we can talk about what I foresee for our the rest of our day. So with that, I will start with Sites Project Authority.
Yes, good morning, Hearing Officer Kinsey, Andrew Hitchens for Sites Project Authority and my colleagues Aaron Ferguson and Michelle Chester will also be participating.
Welcome, good morning. California Department of Water Resources.
Good morning, Eric Soderland.
Good morning, Mr. Soderland. I think we may, I think it may not just be on my end, so good morning, I heard your introduction, but there was a little cutting in and out, so just noted for the, if that comes up later, I'll let you know. And then United States Bureau of Reclamation.
Good morning, this is Allison Mitchell with the Regional Solicitors Office in Sacramento on behalf of Reclamation, good morning.
Good morning, Ms. Mitchell. State Water Contractors.
Good morning, Jenna Mandel Rice on behalf of the State Water Contractors.
Thank you, good morning. Central Delta Water Agency at All.
Good morning, Dean Reese for Central Delta Water Agency and South Delta Water Agency at All.
Thank you, good morning.
Good morning, OSHA Reserve for San Joaquin County as well, thanks.
Thank you. TNM King Farms.
Morning, Ben King for TNM King Farms, happy new year.
Happy New Year, good morning, Mr. King. Clark Ornebaum. Calusa Indian Community Council. Che A. Foca Band of Northeastern Pomo. Pescantin Band. Friends of the River.
Good morning, Donald Mooney on behalf of Friends of the River, as well as Sierra Club, Sea Spa and State California Salmon. And I think others are here on behalf of those groups as well.
Great, thank you, I will go through them and good morning, Mr. Mooney.
Morning.
Other representatives from Sea Spa, do I have Mr. Schutz?
Good morning, Chris Schutz for California Sport Fishing Protection Alliance.
Thank you, good morning, and thank you for listening, full name, I appreciate that.
Ms. Kinsey.
Yes.
Sorry for the interruption, Kiko Mertz here also for Friends of the River.
Thank you, good morning, Ms. Mertz.
Good morning.
I know we mentioned, I think we mentioned Sierra Club, but do we have anyone else from Sierra Club, from Sierra Club? We have Mr. Mooney, I know. And how about Aqua Alliance? California Water Impact Network. Maybe I'll move through, I will set these aside and we can come back if we, if I missed anyone, but I'll go ahead and go to San Francisco Baykeeper, the Bay Institute, Defenders of Wildlife and Golden State Salmon Association.
Good morning, Ms. Kinsey, Eric Buscher for San Francisco Baykeeper and the co-protestants.
Thank you, good morning. Water Climate Trust, Waterkeeper Alliance and International Rivers. Winnemun Wintu Tribe. Pacific Coast Federation of Fishermen's Association at All. Center for Biological Diversity. Trout Unlimited. And with that, is there anyone, and I didn't go through my entire list, but is there anyone who's planning to participate today who I missed and who has not or otherwise who has not had a chance to introduce themselves?
Hi, I'm here, it's Terry Moore from Che A. Foca.
Thank you, good morning, Ms. Moore. I will note this.
Hi, good morning.
Is there anyone else? All right, thank you, welcome, good morning, I will start in with just a brief background of where we are. We completed the bulk of the case in chief portion of this proceeding last year on November 7th, and we're picking up today with the authorities witnesses who submitted testimony about the incidental take permit. I did issue an evidentiary ruling which was signed on January 22nd, but unfortunately, as all of you noted for me, did not go out to the service list on that day. And I apologize for that, it was, we did work with our Department of Information Technology, it was a problem with our email sending out, it actually had to do with the sending email address. We are taking measures to hopefully prevent that from ever happening again because there was no, it was, it was frustrating. But I apologize for that, again, that was, that was an error on our end, so I, we did attempt to resend that out, I believe that was the 28th when that came to my attention. And now you have it, based on that delay, I did go ahead and extend the deadline for submission of rebuttal evidence until February 5th, end of the day. That way, I think, I know it doesn't give us a lot of time, but we can at least discuss on the 6th probably in the afternoon, so we can look at what came in over the lunch break. But we can start to discuss on the 6th any procedural issues related to the rebuttal evidence once we've had a chance to look at it, so I'm not planning to talk a lot about the rebuttal portion of the hearing today because I think it'll make more sense to postpone that conversation until after we've actually seen the rebuttal evidence. I also included in that evidentiary ruling a request for additional information about some of the, well, all of the water right claims and the, that are related to claims of injury arising out of this, the, the application at issue in this proceeding. And I extended, I had set a deadline in the evidentiary ruling that then didn't go out, but the, the deadline for submittal now is February 18th. So I wanted to bring that to your attention as well. At the same, on the same day when we discovered this failure of the ruling to go out on January 28th, I also set time limits that are, that would apply to this, just this ITP portion of the hearing, so not rebuttal. I will set separate time limits for the rebuttal portion once we've had a chance to see how much rebuttal testimony there is. But we do, we do have time limits and we are, will be, the AHO will be tracking time today just to keep us on track. I did cancel the February 10th hearing day based on the amount of evidence that came in, I have a feeling we will finish, we will be able to cancel at least one more day, but I didn't want to get ahead of ourselves, but Monday is off calendar. So you have at least that day back in your available to you to do other things. And then just briefly, the agenda that I have for the day is to go ahead and start with the authorities witnesses testifying about the ITP. My understanding is that panel, well, panel one is just Ms. Forsyth. Panel two is Ms. Hale and Ms. Weber. Panel three will be Mr. Whittington, Dr. Greenwood and Dr. Wilder. And then panel four will be Mr. Walker, and my plan is just to proceed forward and see how far we get. Another matter that I wanted to note for you in case it is helpful and just for the public in general is that we have set up a calendar on the AHO webpage for the Sites proceeding. If you scroll down from where the postings are, you will see this calendar and it looks, it's, it goes in reverse chronological order, so it references the most recent hearing days first and then goes backwards. But it has, it lists the witnesses that we heard from on those days and then provides a link to the morning or afternoon YouTube session. And that's, I think for everyone's convenience, we found it useful on our end. So we have done that and we will try to project forward what days we think we'll be hearing from particular witnesses and we've posted that on the calendar. It's not binding, so take it with a grain of salt, please, but we will try to project forward going through this part of the hearing and rebuttal as well to give those members who may be more interested in particular testimony than, than others, a look forward as to where we are. So we will attempt to keep that updated and then to link the, the video once the AHO YouTube video is available. With all of that background, are there any procedural issues that we should address today that are not related to, as I said, I know we'll need to talk about rebuttal or I imagine we will and we'll get to that on the 6th, but anything else today? I'll start, I did not see how the hands went up, but I'll start with Mr. Hitchens, we'll go from there.
Yes, thank you, Hearing Officer, just, we did get some estimates of cross for our ITP related testimony witnesses, but it would be helpful if we could maybe get some estimates now for the first two panels and that will help us organize the third panel which has the three witnesses on that that you walked through just, just a moment ago.
Great, that's a good idea, let's go ahead and if we can, please go around the room with respect to, we'll start with panel one, well, we can address both panel one and panel two. I will turn first to the, what we're calling the NGO parties, Mr. Buscher, you're you're on camera, so I'll turn to you first, do you have an estimate for the first two panels?
Um.
For cross.
Sure. I would suspect that we'll be done with our cross of Ms. Forsyth this morning. Sorry, that's not super specific. I'll defer to Mr. Mooney on panel two.
I, I would expect probably less than an hour, I mean, significant, you know, probably.
Thank you. And Mr. Reese, do you have an estimate from the, the Delta Parties?
Yeah, with regard to panel one and two, we're estimating maybe 15 minutes.
Okay. And I don't, I, I don't think it's necessary for me to go through all. It sounds like the NGO parties will be the, the bulk here, but here's what I can say, Mr. Hitchens for planning for your witnesses, we can plan, we won't start with panel three before lunch, so you can at least have that assurance, but it sounds like we will probably get to them today, later this afternoon, so.
Okay, thank you, that's very helpful.
Great. Mr. Reese, do you have a procedural issue?
Oh yeah, I just wanted to know, I don't, we don't need to take it up now, but maybe on the 6th or maybe this afternoon, I just wanted to discuss the requirement or the information you're requesting with regard to water rights and water rights that may be impacted or injury to water rights, and just to note as a sort of precursor to the conversation, there's a couple of specific parties that we have no problem with that are in our group in terms of identifying those water rights, but when you talk about Central and South Delta together, you're talking about thousands of water rights. So, that's a task that is a, you know, anyway, yeah, I just wanted to preview that.
Maybe let's talk about it now, if that's, I don't think necessarily it's a long conversation, I realize, and when I put out that request, I realized that it would impact certain parties differently than others. My intent with that and so it, and if you need a follow-up in writing so I can, well, or this discussion may be enough. My intent was to make sure that, of course, that the State Water Board has the information it needs to make the necessary findings, particularly where a claim of injury is involved, I realize that when you're talking about these water agencies that there are, they're potentially, you know, hundred, I don't know how many, as you mentioned, hundreds or possibly thousands of water rights at issue. I think it would be very helpful to provide specifics where you can with respect to particular parties who may be, you know, directly involved in this proceeding. And then to the extent you can, might generalize other water rights, I'm not expecting you to provide me an itemized list of all of the water rights claimed by all of South Delta Water Agencies members, that I don't think that's necessary. But I don't know what, so you, I expect that you will exercise your judgment and how to respond to that request for information and I understand that it's, this is not intended to be overly burdensome or pointless exercise, it's really, it's an attempt for me to gather the information. And if there is additional information that we find is maybe relevant or helpful, I can always follow up with that.
Very good, thank you.
Does that help?
That helps, yes, yes.
Okay, thank you. Mr. King.
Yes, good morning, so I have some questions regarding the evidentiary record. One is the protests, is the, the body of the protests included part of the evidentiary record, I don't think there was any objection to that, but that's where I've already alleged a lot of my water rights is in the protest itself. So just want to be clear that that's actually part of the record, since that wasn't objected to.
It, well, let me clarify, I believe the pro, admission of the protests into the evidentiary record was objected to by the authority as I recall, and that was addressed in the, and that was overruled and addressed in the, in the 100-page evidentiary ruling that did not go out on the 22nd, but went out on the 28th, so it is buried in there. And there, there was a particular chart with respect to objections to the AHO exhibits, but those exhibits did come in, however, I would ask that if for the convenience of the AHO that you provide separately a submission with respect to any water rights, that would be quite helpful.
Okay, and then regarding, I, I looked at the spreadsheet and I don't know if I got through the rest of the body of it, but the spreadsheet, my understanding is that you excluded all my testimony except, except two paragraphs, which is, you know, which is fine, what, the one issue that that actually affect my water right regarding water quality is the US EPA impaired water body references that I, that I mentioned in my testimony. A lot of those impaired water body tributaries, the Clovis Basin drain are just upstream from my diversion and impacted by the, the water being released across the Davis Weir Dam. So you excluded that from evidence and it's US EPA information. So I guess I'm trying to figure out a way to proceed because water quality is a very important part of my water right, especially when it comes to riparian and the in-stream rights. So I guess I'm just going to include that in my water right part?
Well, you have, you have an opportunity, I mean, you can attempt to submit it as, as rebuttal evidence if you have testimony that that responds to the case in chief put on by the authority, so in a, in a way you have a second chance, but it does need to be, any rebuttal testimony does need to directly respond to the authority's case in chief, but with that testimony you would also have the chance to submit the underlying documents that document particular water quality standards and that kind of thing. And I would
You left that as exhibit, I'm not sure, but you just, I don't think it was overruled as exhibit, but I'll, I'll go back in, but I'll, let me think about this. The, the last question I have is, I didn't see any, did you address the evidence which were presented at the, at the hearings onsite hearings by myself and Mr. Ornebaum, there, is that still part of the record, evidentiary record?
I'm sorry, will you clarify the, which evidence?
During, on, on the, on our onsite visits at my property and at Ballsen Weir Dam, there was testimony presented by myself and Mr. Ornebaum, and there was questions by the authority and some of the other parties, including, and and so I wanted to make sure that's part of the record because I didn't see any objection to that, because that's what you're.
Yes, the, the recording that was taken during the, that the AHO took during the site visit is part of the evidentiary record, we did administer the oath with respect to statements made during that site visit, so to the extent that, that statements were made under oath, that would be considered testimony.
Great, thank you very much for all of clarification.
Thank you. Ms. Reserve.
Good, good morning, and I'm sorry, I'm, I wanted you to explain again where that time tracker calendar item is, I was looking on the FTP site and I didn't quite find it, so I just wondered if you could restate that.
Certainly, it's on the AHO webpage, so if you go to the webpage itself where we, we post the orders and rulings that come out from this office and then scroll down, you can see this calendar, so it has links, live links and everything in there and we'll try to keep that updated. So hopefully it's useful, it's a, it's an attempt. Are there any other matters, procedural matters we should address, and I'll note for the record, I see Mr. Spain has joined us, so thank you, good morning, Mr. Spain. And then also I will note for the record that we have Board Member Firestone on, on the Zoom panel platform with us this morning as well. With that, then I will turn to Mr. Hitchens, are you prepared to call your first witness this morning?
Yes, we are, Ms. Forsyth and Michelle Chester will be conducting the direct.
Great, thank you. Good morning, Ms. Chester, and I will start by administering the oath, but first we're going to have our team pin the appropriate parties here. I'm looking, do we have Ms. Chester on the line?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay. We just don't have you pinned, there you are, great, thank you. Good morning, and we'll go ahead, I know Ms. Forsyth, welcome back. And I know we have administered the oath to you before, but we, I will go ahead and redo this since it's been a little while. If you would, please raise your right hand. Ms. Forsites, do you swear or affirm under the penalty of perjury that the testimony you will give in this hearing will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. And with that, I will hand things over to you, Ms. Chester.
Ms. Forsyth, could you please state your full name for the record? Alicia Forsyth. Do you understand that you are presenting your testimony under oath? I do. Is Exhibit Sites 317 an accurate statement of your written testimony for this ITP related portion of this proceeding? It is. And did you prepare that written testimony? I did. Do you have any corrections to make to your testimony or summary testimony presentation? I do, so on paragraph four, line 15 of my written testimony in Sites 317, the date January 19, 2021 should be January 19, 2022. And then that same date should also be corrected in my summary presentation in Sites 330 on Slide 4, under that first bullet. Thank you. Does your written testimony cite other exhibits that were submitted as part of the ITP related portion of this proceeding? Yes, my testimony does, it refers back to Sites 298, 299, and 318 through 329. Did you confirm that the exhibits submitted as Sites 298, 299, and 318 through 329 are true and correct copies of the documents referenced in your written testimony? I did, yes. Is your firsthand knowledge of each of these exhibits reflected in your written testimony, Sites 317? It is, yes. And noting the correction you made is Exhibit Sites 330 an accurate summary presentation of your written testimony? It is, yes. And did you prepare that summary presentation? I did, yes. And would you please summarize your testimony submitted for this portion of the proceeding in Sites 330? I will, yes, Ms. Mullins, if you can bring up 330, Sites 330.
Right, thank you, Ms. Chester, Hearing Officer Kinsey and members of the State Board. I appreciate the opportunity to testify today on the authority's incidental take permits for the Sites project. Next slide. The authority has received two incidental take permits called ITPs or permits for the Sites project from the California Department of Fish and Wildlife or CDFW. One is for the construction of the project and the other is for the operations of the project. I'll provide an overview, overview of both permits, starting first with the construction permit and then followed by the operations permit. For each permit, I'll provide an overview of the timeline for development, an overview of the content of each permit, and then describe the authority's anticipated approach to implementing certain conditions of each permit. Next slide. And we can move to the next one, I'll start first with the construction ITP. On this slide, as I mentioned in the introduction, I'd like to correct January 2021 to January 2022. So in January 2022, the authority submitted the project's construction ITP application to CDFW. The application included the request for take of three listed species, giant garter snake, tricolor blackbird and Swain's inskock. CDFW determined the application incomplete in April of 2022 and requested additional information. The authority then met with CDFW a number of times in 2022 and 2023 to address this information request. In June of 2023, the authority resubmitted its construction ITP application as an entirely updated application. In this resubmittal, the authority added two candidate species, crotches bumblebee and western bumblebee. Next slide. In June of 2023, CDFW determined that the resubmitted application incomplete and requested additional information. The authority and CDFW continued to meet to work through this information request. Later in that year, the authority submitted a supplement to its resubmitted application. This supplement addressed CDFW's July letter, replaced information on crotches bumblebee and withdrew the, the authority's request for take of western bumblebee. CDFW determined the authority's construction ITP application complete in December of 2023 and subsequently issued the project's construction ITP in October of 2024. Next slide. And subsequently issued the project's construction ITP in October of twenty twenty four. Next slide. The project's construction incidental take permit was effective upon issuance and expires on December thirty first of twenty thirty four. Unless it is renewed, it covers all aspects of the construction of the sites project's new facilities. Improvements to existing facilities that will be utilized by the project and then inundation of the reservoir footprint. These activities are collectively referred to as covered activities in the permit. The permit covers the incidental take as a result of incidental direct mortality. Permanent habitat loss and indirect impacts to four species. Crotches bumblebee, giant garter snake, tricolor blackbird and Swanson's hawk. Next slide. There are a number of conditions of approval in the permit. Conditions one through five generally require compliance with all applicable federal, state and local laws. Condition six requires that the authority obtain authorization from CDFW before starting any covered activities. Through what's called a phased authorization project, excuse me, phased authorization process outlined in the permit. Condition seven specifies ITP management roles and responsibilities. And requires implementation of a number of programs and activities such as a worker education program. Condition eight identifies monitoring and reporting requirements. Condition nine includes the specific minimization measures to be implemented for each covered species. Condition ten requires permanent protection of compensatory habitat mitigation habitat at specific ratios. Prior to the start of covered activities or within eighteen months of the start of covered activities. As long as the appropriate financial security is provided. Condition ten also requires the restoration of temporary impacts. And lastly, condition eleven identifies the specific requirements for a financial security if one is needed. Next slide. On this slide, I wanted to illustrate a little bit of the process the authority anticipates undertaking to implement the ITP. The first step is to complete surveys and prepare and submit the phased authorization package. Once the authority obtains land access, land cover and protocol level species surveys will be conducted. As the design activities progress, the species surveys and design information will be used together to refine impact numbers and acres. Established compensatory mitigation would then be identified. Or if compensatory mitigation is not yet completed, the authority would provide the necessary financial security. The authority would submit all of this information in the phased authorization package to CDFW. And these packages will cover two years of construction activities looking forward. CDFW then reviews the package based on the criteria in the ITP and can request additional information. Approve or deny the package. And construction for the specific phase covers, for the specific activities covered in that package. Cannot begin until CDFW approves the package. In step two, the authority would implement any pre-construction measures in conditions seven, eight and nine of the ITP. These include general measures along with species specific measures, um, such as surveys right before construction takes place. Step three includes construction actions and the authority would be implementing the phase plan, protocols and measures. Along with construction monitoring and minimization measures during actual construction activities. Restoration of temporary impacts would also occur throughout construction. As construction is completed, restoration of temporary impacts would also be completed. And the authority would complete the final reporting called for in the ITP. And lastly, if compensatory mitigation was implemented through what we call permitting responsible actions. The authority would continue management of those lands into perpetuity. Slide nine. I will now provide an overview of the operations ITP. Next slide. On October, uh, in October twenty twenty three, the authority submitted its operations ITP application to CDFW. The application include the requests of, for take of four listed species, delta smelt, longfin smelt. Spring run Chinook salmon in the Sacramento River system and winter run Chinook salmon. CDFW determined the application incomplete in November of twenty twenty three and requested additional information. The authority and CDFW then met a number of times throughout twenty twenty four to address this information request. Next slide. In October of twenty twenty four, the authority submitted a supplement to its application to address CDFW's information request. The supplement also requested take of white sturgeon, a then recently listed candidate species. CDFW determined the authority's application complete and subsequently issued the project's ITP in late October twenty twenty four. Next slide. The project's operations incidental take permit was effective upon issuance and expires on December thirty first twenty thirty nine. Unless renewed, it covers all aspects of the operations of the sites project. Along with limited maintenance activities at the fish screen locations. Again, these activities are collectively referred to as covered activities in the permit. The permit covers the incidental take as a result of incidental direct mortality. And indirect impacts such as reduction in habitat extent and quality to five listed species. Delta smelt, longfin smelt, spring run Chinook salmon in the Sacramento River system. Winter run Chinook salmon and white sturgeon. Next slide. Similar structure to the construction ITP, there are a number of conditions of approval in the operations ITP permit also. Conditions one through five require compliance with all applicable federal, state and local laws. Condition six requires notification to CDFW if baseline conditions change. Condition seven specifies ITP management roles and requires implementation of a number of. Programs and activities such as a worker education program. Condition eight identifies monitoring and reporting requirements along with species specific monitoring and science requirements. And water quality monitoring. Condition nine includes the specific minimization measures to be implemented during project operations. Including fish screen requirements, diversion criteria, exchange requirements and release requirements. Condition ten requires permanent protection of compensatory mitigation habitat at specific acreages. Prior to the start of construction, or excuse me, the start of covered activities. Condition eleven identifies the specific requirements for a financial security. Next slide. On this slide, I want to talk a little bit about, uh, how we intend to implement components of condition eight of the ITP. The authority envisions implementing the species specific monitoring and science requirements. Through the authority's adaptive management program. Study and monitoring plans would be developed in draft form by the project adaptive management science team. In collaboration with our facility partners. And these would be reviewed by state, federal fisheries agencies, external partners and interested parties. The authority would seek comment on the details of the study or monitoring effort along with input and partnerships on collaboration with others. That can further the study effort and further broaden the scientific knowledge of the species. Input from CDFW would be sought through this process and the authority would seek approval from CDFW to ensure consistency with the ITP. The adaptive management science team would then forward the study or monitoring plan to the adaptive management committee. Being that this action is originating out of an ITP requirement, um, and CDFW would have approved the study at this point. Review from the committee is likely more for information sharing, um, and additional input. The adaptive management committee would then forward the study or monitoring plan to the authority for funding and contracting actions. Due to the limited timeframe of the ITP, it is likely that the study and monitoring efforts in the permit. Will inform terms and conditions of a future renewal of a permit. Rather than changes to the project operations prior to twenty thirty nine. Next slide. As I previously mentioned, condition nine includes the specific minimization measures to be implemented during project operations. Including fish screen requirements, diversion criteria, exchange requirements and release requirements. As the authority is responsible for compliance with the ITP, the authority will be the agency responsible for deciding whether. And how much to divert water. The authority anticipates coordination with TCCA and GCID on a daily or more frequent basis during project diversions. To adjust those diversions to changing conditions. The authority also anticipates developing analytical tools to help in this daily decision-making process. Similarly, the authority will be responsible for deciding whether and how much to release from sites reservoir. Based on our storage partner request, request. Releases will be coordinated with a number of entities and will require preparation and implementation of temperature and dissolved oxygen studies. And ongoing monitoring. Next slide. And lastly, condition of approval nine in the ITP requires certain conditions relative to operational exchanges. These conditions ensure that exchanges are neutral to species protections. And do not result in significantly higher water temperatures in the Sacramento River in certain months of the year. And that what is significantly higher is specified in the ITP permit itself. For the Sacramento River in particular, these conditions strike a balance between not resulting in worse conditions for fish. While working to improve conditions, especially in dry and critically dry years. And this concludes the summary of my, uh, testimony.
Thank you, Ms. Forsythe. With that, I believe I will turn first to Mr. Busher. Do you have questions for Ms. Forsythe?
I do, thank you. Um, good morning again, Ms. Forsythe, thank you again for your time. It's good to see you after a couple of months. Um. Do you agree that the sites authority has, uh, a duty to act as a responsible steward of the environment?
Think sometimes the definition of responsible steward can be different for different. People, um, different organizations.
Do you agree that the authority has an obligation to act as a responsible steward of the environment in its view?
Uh, yes, and I think the authority has reflected that in its strategic plan and in its values as an organization reflected in the strategic plan.
And part of those values are to attempt to design and operate a project. Based on the authority's environmental values side by side with water supply needs, correct?
Hey, correct.
You've described those environmental values and water supply needs as co-equal goals for our changing climate for the authority and the project, correct?
Uh, I don't believe the authority has called them co-equal goals. If you have something in specific that you can point to, environmental stewardship is of value in our strategic plan. But I don't believe, um, that we have, I can't recall offhand anytime when the authority has said. These are co-equal goals, uh, between environmental values and water supply.
And fair enough, and I, I don't, I don't mean to play gotcha, um, there's a blog post that you had authored on the authority's website that describes that. Um, Ms. Mullin, I, I emailed that to staff this morning, um, if we can pull up that exhibit.
Great. And we'll see if we can get an exhibit number two at some point.
Yeah, thank you. I didn't try and guess.
Right. Sounds like we have it, we're pulling it up.
Great, thank you. Ms. Forsythe, unfortunately, this is undated, so I don't know exactly when it was posted to the authority's webpage. Um. Do you recognize the, this blog?
I do. Yes, generally, yeah.
And if we go down to the third paragraph. On the one, two, three, fourth line, starting at the end of the fourth line says, it's a project designed with environmental values. Side by side with water supply needs and designed to serve these co-equal goals for our changing climate. Do you see that?
I do see that. Let me read the context here really quick.
Please.
Yes, so I do see that.
Um, and do you think that's an accurate reflection of the authority's belief about the environmental values and environmental stewardship?
Reflection, so I guess I look at this. When it, when I wrote this, it's project design with environmental values side by side with water supply needs. I was looking at this in the context of, um. The environmental use of water out of the reservoir, so, uh. We, sites is formulating. The structure of the project to have the environment, environmental water stored in sites reservoir. To be equal to and at the same level with our member water, so it's not. A lower priority for the environment to store its water or to release water out of the reservoir. Um, it has the same. In terms of the storage of the reservoir, the environment has the same, um, I'll say rights and abilities. To store, release its water in the reservoir as do all of our other members. Um, so it's not a junior member, it's not a senior member, everybody is kind of on the same plane. Level in terms of storage in the reservoir itself.
Thank you, um. Does the authority believe that acting as a responsible steward of the environment goes beyond how it releases or prioritizes the use of environmental water?
Objection vague. You define environmental water?
As Ms. Forsythe just described it.
Well, I think. I think kind of looking back at the authority's strategic plan and an environmental steward as being one of our values. I think we do look at that as going beyond, um. Now, and let me share some context for that if I could, um, you know, we look at. Both the water inside the reservoir providing environmental benefits, uh, but we also look at the impacts of. The reservoir itself and what that future holds, and I think the authority has been pretty, um. Progressive and trying to go beyond, um, with things like, um, you know, requiring net zero GHG. Emissions, um, you know, that's something that I'm not aware that. Really anybody, any other reservoir does, um, in the state, and so we, we're also pushing ourselves to. Use renewable resources, um, in our power use. Granted, that's required by the state, but trying to be, you know, more progressive than the state's timelines, so. I would say yes, and we have been pretty, um. Want to say flexible to. Changes and adjustments in our permit requirements, even though at times those have been, um. You know, present some challenges for us or increase our costs. Um, we've tried to be very flexible with the permitting agencies. Um, to. Work carefully with them, even though at times, um. That will result in more costs for the authority. I'm not sure if I quite answered the question, but. I'm not sure if I quite answered the question, but.
No, that, that's helpful. I appreciate the, the context, um, but I guess more granularly does. The authorities environmental stewardship, um, and the environmental values that you're describing. Also apply to how the authority plans to divert water in order to fill the reservoir.
Well, it does. I mean, I think being an offstream reservoir makes a big difference than being located on. A mainstream river system, we're not blocking anadromous fish passage. Um, we're using state of the art fish screens and we have adjusted our diversion criteria. Quite substantially, uh, you know, if we look back at our 2017 draft EIR. Our diversion criteria was, you know, five thousand CFS at Wilkins Slough. And we are now at ten thousand nine hundred and thirty. Um, at Wilkins Slough, so double that original criteria, um, and have, you know, quite substantially changed. What we originally called our pulse protection criteria, um, into the flow dependent diversion criteria, uh, which is. You did result in some loss of water for the authority, loss of our ability to divert, um, but it is something that. You know, in working with the agencies, um, and CDFW in particular. We felt it was important to make those transitions.
I have some questions about that that I'll come back to on the, the pulse flow diversion, um. Do you agree that the authorities environmental stewardship obligations go beyond just the endangered species analyzed by CDFW in the two ITPs? To other fish and wildlife and ecosystems as well?
I, I do, but I just hesitate a little bit because I think we all have different meanings of environmental stewardship. Um. So, I mean, I do agree that it goes beyond just the listed species and. Yeah.
And when the authority talks about the importance of meeting environmental resource needs, um. Does that apply right throughout the Sacramento River and the Delta? Or is it more specific than that in terms of those resource needs to the environmental uses of water from the reservoir?
Are you, um, sorry, are you looking at the word environmental resource needs in the, in this paragraph here specifically?
Oh, no, sorry. We can take this document down. I apologize.
Okay.
And for, just for the record, we were going to mark this BK one twenty seven.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Mr. Buscher, if you could repeat the question, I'm sorry.
Uh, I'll, I'll move on. I'll strike that last one, um. Based on the authorities view of its obligations to natural resources of the environment. Um, when it submitted the ITP applications. Um, am I correct in understanding that it proposed conditions that it thought were based on the best available science to protect those species?
That is correct.
And. You mentioned a, a minute ago, the pulse flow protection. That was one of those conditions that the authority proposed to protect endangered species in the application, correct?
That is correct.
And that condition as, as a proposed by the authority was not ultimately adopted by CDFW, correct?
That is correct.
Does sites plan to operate the reservoir consistent with that proposed condition?
Objection vague. Which condition?
The pulse flow condition?
No, we would operate the reservoir consistent with the ITP. As issued by CDFW.
And can you describe for me the decision making process the authority went through to determine that it didn't. Need the pulse flow protection any longer?
Sure, um, so. Throughout, um, twenty twenty four, we had a number of discussions with CDFW. Uh, I'll say kind of at the staff level, um. Between myself, um, and members of the, not members, but, uh, um. Individuals of our consultant teams, the authorities consultant teams with CDFW, um. And their staff. And as their staff was going through the analysis and developing the ITP permit itself and conducting their own independent analysis. They raised concerns with regard to the pulse flow protection measures, um, that those weren't. Um. They felt adequately protecting the, um, flows into the bypass systems, um, into the upper bypass systems in particular. Um, when we had developed the pulse flow protection, it was developed, uh. A number of years ago, uh, before the twenty seventeen draft EIR. And we were looking more, um, at movement past the screens. In that development and not so much at movement into, uh, the bypass systems. Um, CFW really brought up the fact that the bypass systems are. More recent science has indicated that the bypass systems have the potential to. Uh, really help fish get out on the floodplain and grow larger faster and become stronger, um. To move out to the ocean and thus, you know, are more likely to come back as an adult. And so through that analysis and discussion at the staff level, um, you know, we, we saw what they were. Concerned about, um, as they shared that with us. And, um, came up, um, they proposed the. Uh, flow dependent diversions, um, we worked on that together, uh, to look at the curve and think. At the different curves and think about how they applied at the different facilities. Um, and ultimately came up, um, with a curve that CDFW felt comfortable with and that. Um, we thought made sense from the authorities perspective, um. And that was what was reflected in the final ITP.
Did CDFW object to the authority, including the pulse flow protection, right, apart from the flow dependent diversion tool that they were requiring in the ITP?
Think your question is, did they object to both being in the permit, um? I wouldn't. I, that was not the dialogue that we had. The dialogue that we had was. Replace the pulse flow with the flow dependent diversion, um. Was the dialogue that we had.
And so, uh, I, I appreciate that CDFW. Made that switch. From the application to the ultimate permit. My question is, right, the authority could shoot. Well, let me, let me start here. Could the authority choose to include the pulse flow protection? Of its own volition, right, apart from, as, as long as it complied with the ITP otherwise?
I think the authority could choose to have the pulse, to implement the pulse, like you're asking, could the authority implement the pulse flow protection? As long as it's consistent with the ITP permit otherwise, um, and. I think, yes, the authority can choose to be more. Um, implement conditions. Implement actions that are more, I'll say stringent than the permit if the authority so chooses, as long as the authority continues to be consistent with the ITP permit.
Can you identify any more stringent operational controls that the authority plans to abide by than what CDFW required in the ITP permit?
Say, there's not anything yet that we have specifically identified, um. That the authority plans to abide by, uh, in implementing diversions. I will say that. Um, the pulse flow protection identified in the permit, um. Is intended to be. A very frequent change in diversion amounts. Um, meaning that as you ramp up on the curve, we're almost kind of. Very frequently changing how much we're diverting at the facilities to ramp up with that, um. It's likely that the authority would ramp up in more of a stepwise fashion, um, you know, so. We will stay consistent with the permit and we will probably ramp up a little bit slower. And thus a little bit more protective for fish than. How that pulse flow was modeled in the ITP, um, it's very difficult to make. Continuous changes at a diversion facility, um. In that ramp up, um. So just from a facilities operation and facilities constraint, we will probably end up ramping up. A little bit slower than that curve, um, in more of a stepwise fashion than the continuous change envisioned in the curve.
Other than that logistical constraint, are there any other? More stringent controls, including, right, the. Pulse flow protection that the authority proposed, um, that the authority plans to use in its diversions.
Right. Not that we're envisioning at this time.
Between the time the application was submitted and now, um, are you aware of any scientific analysis or information the authority has received or? Performed that demonstrates that the pulse flow protection it proposed is no longer consistent with the best available science?
Um, I would have to say that I'm, I'm not like a PhD scientist, but what I. I do oversee the authorities permitting, so I get a lot of input from our scientists and from the CDFW and. US Fish and Wildlife Team and others. So I can't answer the question in specifics, but I will say that. Um, the feedback I got from our team in evaluating the pulse flow versus. The flow dependent diversions, um. Our team felt that the flow dependent diversions did better protect. Flows into the bypass and some of the other components that CDFW was thinking about and concerned about, um.
Earlier, you described one of the objectives of the. Pulse flow protection as ensuring that fish could get past the fish screens and the, the intake, um. Uh, I take that as a different objective in the authorities mind than the bypass, the but flows into the bypasses. Uh, that you're describing as with CDFW's objective. Is that accurate?
That's a, that's a really good question, and I, I, um. So yes, pulse flow was really focused on moving fish past the fish screens. Um, and continuing to, uh, move them down the river system, um. As they're out migrating, uh, the flow dependent diversions is kind of a twofold mechanism. It's both moving them past the fish screens, um. Continuing to have, you know, fairly decent flows past those fish screens when the authority is diverting. And also, um, making sure that changes in flows into the bypass system. Um, are minimized, that the project is not having a substantial change. In the amount of, um, flows into the, the timing, the start and the timing. Um, of flows into the bypass system. So I'd say the, the pulse protection was. The authority focused on the fish screens and moving fish through the system. The flow dependent diversions is kind of multifaceted of moving past the fish screens, moving through the system, moving into the bypass systems and continuing down. So it encompasses more, the flow dependent diversion encompasses more, um. Protections for fish than what we were originally envisioning in the pulse flow.
And, and I appreciate the. Two categories. That's very helpful for me. I, thank you. With respect to just the screen passage side of that. It's correct that the flow dependent diversion condition, um, is less restrictive. Than the pulse flow protection was on the screen passage side alone, right?
Uh, I don't believe so. I believe that flow dependent diversion results. In a higher. We can, the authority cannot divert. Under the flow dependent diversion criteria until a higher flow is achieved at the fish screens, so it. It's actually inhibit, it, it reduces our ability to divert. At the fish screens, um, and we, um, had a resulting, um. You know, loss of water, uh, diversions for the project because of the flow dependent diversions.
But there's also an increase in the number of days where diversions occur, correct?
I think that's fair. There is an increase. My understanding is that there is an increase in the number of days and, um. I do believe that. Uh, Mr. Walker, who will testify in the last, um, can speak to a lot of the details of this. My understanding is that. There is an increase in. The number of days, but the total amount diverted, um, is less. Because the flows are higher, required to be higher at the fish screen locations under the flow dependent diversions. Than it would have otherwise been under the pulse protection. And, and the original Wilkins.
I, I'm not sure I got the last part of that, um. It would have been otherwise been other than the pulse protection and.
Bypass criteria.
I, there's something about Wilkins Slough. I, I just didn't catch that last part of what you said.
Uh, I said Wilkins Slough bypass criteria. I got a little notification that my internet is unstable. Are you guys able to hear me or should I call in?
You just cut out for a, a second there, but you're back.
Okay.
And Ms. Cock, did you get what you needed? I think we all experienced.
I hope so.
Great, thank you.
You described. Working with CDFW and meetings that you had with them, um. Were project participants part of that process?
Uh, they were not involved in those meetings. It was authority staff, um, and CDFW staff. And when I say authority staff, myself and our consultant teams.
And was the Department of Water Resources or Bureau of Reclamation part of that process?
Uh, in those, uh, working meetings, no, they were not involved.
Did they have other? I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, I was about to say, I should be clear. So we had a number of working meetings, um, where it was myself and the authorities consultant team. With CDFW staff, um, you know, for full and complete disclosure, we also had meetings occasionally. Um, with, uh, I'll say the authorities executive director and. Some of our board members and CDFW management, um, those were much less frequent, um, and happened. Um. You know, very few times, but we did occasionally have meetings at that level. Um, and our participants, some of our participants, some of our board members were involved at that level. Um, I. Cannot recall where we had meetings with. CDFW. And reclamation. Together was, I think, one of your questions. We may have done that. I think we did that back in like. Twenty nineteen or twenty twenty, but not in these recent, um. Not in the meetings in twenty twenty four to finalize the ITP.
All right. Thank you. I, I just want to make sure I understood that, right? So there were regular meetings between. You, your staff and CDFW staff. And then there were some periodic or fairly infrequent meetings that included board members of the authority and CDFW?
That's correct. Um, that would have been at the management level of CDFW, correct?
Okay. And. In this last year, right, since the application was submitted, the ITP application was submitted, um. There weren't any meetings between the authority and CDFW and the bureau. Is that right?
That's my recollection. That's correct. Yes.
Okay, and is that also true? Were there meetings with the authority DWR and CDFW on that subject in that? Year long back and forth? year long back and forth?
We have occasionally had meetings with the authority, C D F W and D W R. Sorry, I'm trying to think here around. I think in twenty twenty three timeframe. Um, I don't recall any in twenty twenty four timeframe. There may, so let me explain because there's a lot, there's a lot going on to make these things happen. Um, we occasionally had meetings with the authority, C D F W and D W R, and I'll say these were infrequent, you know, periodic, kind of as needed. Um, around the I T P in uh, consideration of wat, the ecosystem water into the Yolo bypass. Um, and potential changes in flows through the Fremont Weir Notch Project. Um, and how to address the Fremont Weir Notch Project. Um, and so there were some occasional meetings between all three of us on those topics. At times, the authority worked directly with C D F W. At times, C D F W worked directly with D W R. So there were, you know, separate kind of triangular meetings happening. Um, but we had some occasional meetings um, with all three of us um, around those two topics. I can't recall if those were entirely in twenty twenty three. And if any occurred in twenty twenty four or not, um, after we submitted the application. But they did, we did have some at least in twenty twenty three.
So earlier you mentioned in the, in the context of our conversation about environmental stewardship, um, that the authority engages in this case with C D F W, right, in, in good faith to try to get to a solution, um, even though that can result in more cost. Can you estimate for me how much additional cost the authority is going to incur um, as a result of the I T P operations permit?
Objection calls for speculation.
I think I'll, Ms. Forsyth, you have the ability to caveat this as appropriate, so please go ahead.
Yeah, we have not done a calculation to estimate how much additional cost the I T P permit. Implementation of the I T P permit will result in, um. You know, we do feel that the science and monitoring program um, in the I T P is robust. Um, we did commit um, to a million dollars a year through the term of the permit for science and monitoring. So we think that that generally, you know, the program kind of generally fits within that, although we have not costed out all of those science and monitoring activities um, for the change in diversions, in particular, the Wilkins Slu um, ten nine, ten thousand nine hundred and thirty and the flow dependent diversions. Um, we have actually not run, um, you know, a full analysis of those um, through like a calcium model and the downstream models to quantify the cost. The exact changes in acre foot of diversions and thus the resulting cost of those yet.
Uh, because in, in parts for the science and monitoring funding. You described a million dollars a year. Is that starting right now, or does that start when operations begin in twenty thirty three-ish?
Patient envisioned it as a million dollars a year um, from, through the term of the permit. So um, you know, we quantified it in the application as fifteen million um, for the, the term of the permit. Um, and we'll end up, you know, somewhere around there with the term being twenty thirty nine. So it functionally starts now. Um, I think we're, you know, we're not going to see exactly a million dollars a year. It's going to ramp up. You know, we're going to have a slower start. It's going to ramp up, be a lot more than a million and then ramp itself back down um, as the permit is implemented and those studies are implemented over time.
So uh, uh, most or significant portion of that fifteen million total will be spent between twenty thirty, thirty three and twenty thirty nine? Like when operations are actually occurring?
Don't, I, I wouldn't say, um. There are a number of study activities that are required prior to operations. Um, and then there's ongoing monitoring that needs to be established prior to operations. So I guess in my rough estimate, I am envisioning that we would be ramping up and spending kind of the bulk of that money between twenty thirty and twenty thirty nine. Um, prior a few, about four or so years prior to operations and then through um, through the actual um, start of operations, so.
Okay. Um, and for that fifteen million dollars total. Uh, I thought you said that that was part of the authority's application. Is that correct?
Estimated in our application to be fifteen million dollars a year. Um, or sorry, I'm sorry, fifteen million dollars total, million a year over the life of the permit. I think honestly, whatever the studies cost, the studies cost. You know, if that turns out to be more than a million, you know, more than fifteen million dollars total, the authority is obligated to implement those studies as described in the I T P. Um, so we, you know, we estimated a science program of a million dollars a year for a total of fifteen million for the life of the permit. Um, if it turns out to cost us, you know, twenty million or twenty five million because of the study efforts and the nature of the work, um, you know, the authority has to implement the program to stay in compliance with I T P.
But that, that cost estimate of fifteen million dollars didn't increase during the time that C D F W was considering the application?
We did not, no. We did not change that.
And I appreciate that you haven't done a full quantitative analysis of the increase in the cost of water. Um, have you done, does the authority perform any estimate of the increased cost of water as a result of the changes in diversion criteria? That are in the I T P permit?
Not in the terms, not in terms of cost of water, um. You know, we have done some analyses to try to get a sense of our diversions with the I T, with the I T P terms, um. And it's been, um. I will say we have some different analyses. But they're all kind of apples to oranges. Um, and so we have not been in a position where we have felt we have a direct comparison that we can use to create a cost number. Um, so we're very careful in creating our cost numbers and looking at those very carefully from a quality control and a consistency standpoint, because those numbers are important. Um, and they tend to like kind of take on a life of their own. So we have done a number of analyses to look at the changes in diversions and our ability to divert under the I T P, um. Those different analyses and, you know, Wes will have some of those, uh, Mr. Walker, Walker will have some of those in his presentation. They don't directly relate back to and feed in directly to our cost model. So we cannot use them to create a new cost number right now. Um, we have to finish out um, all of our calcium work and run it through calcium to get those direct cost numbers and do that in a way that uh, we quality control all the results to feed into the cost model.
Right, in taking the new diversion criteria into account and then applying that into the existing cost analysis that the authority has performed. Can you explain to me why that's an apples and oranges problem?
Um. Sorry, so to get it into the cost model, we need to have it in a certain format in a certain way that is comparable to how we had produced the cost previously. We don't have that right now. We have some analyses of the change in diversions as a result of the I T P for us to get a sense of what the flow dependent diversions would do to our ability to divert, um. But those analyses, I will say, are are using different tools than what we use in our cost model. So I, you know, it, we're, we would not put like a tool, say that we use for our water availability analysis, um. If we ran that tool to quickly get a sense of what the I T P might do to our ability to divert, that tool would not, because it's for the water availability analysis, it's for a different purpose. It does not directly transmit into what we would use into our cost model. I hope I'm explaining that okay. It's the cost model utilizes a specific output, um, and needs that output in a certain way to get a, a reliable cost estimate. We have done analyses to help us understand the change in diversion from a, like a percentage standpoint as a result of the I T P conditions, but those do not transmit directly into the cost model.
Okay. Let me, let me try it this way. Was there a cost analysis that the authority performed with what you're calling the cost model based on the criteria in the I T P application?
There was, yes. Um. Yes, there was.
Okay. And can you describe for me what's missing between the outputs of, of the modeling for the I T P application and the outputs as compared to the outputs of wherever you are in the process for the I T P permit itself? That means that you can't use that same cost model to estimate the cost, the increase in cost as a result of the permit?
So, and I'm, I am not a total expert on this. So this is from like my understanding, kind of at the higher level who helps, you know, a person who helps kind of move these things together and, and makes decisions when the technical team gets stuck. Um, but my understanding is that the cost model would utilize output from calcium tube, which would be a full operational model of sites project operation. So water being diverted off the river into the reservoir, storage in the reservoir and then release out um, of the reservoir. And that release out accounts for, say, movement through the delta availability to move it south of delta. It's kind of looking at the whole um, flow of water in and out and ultimately um, to the members, um, including the environmental water for the state. So it needs to have that kind of whole cycle to it, um. The analyses that we have done to get a sense of the flow dependent diversions have really focused around utilizing, say, tools from the water availability analyses and others that have given us a cha, a sense of change in diversions into the reservoir. But have not been a full operational model that has taken it through the reservoir and then released out, um. So it is those pieces that we would need. We basically would need to rerun, you know, calcium two or ultimately uh, calcium three to run that through the whole cycle to input that into the cost model um, and get a, a cost out of that. Um, we've been very focused as a team on developing a calcium three model um, for the sites project. Um, and um, you know, tracking the state and federal reconsultation efforts to develop that calcium three model. So we have not pulled our team off of developing calcium three to go adjust the calcium two model and run this. We've said getting calcium three done is very important to us. It's very important to our schedule. Move that forward and get that done. Um, and we plan to use the calcium three output with a new, you know, the new C V P state water project reconsultation. The new I T P rules for the sites project to run to get that cost number. Um, so we want to kind of look at all of these things together um, in a calcium three model.
Do you know when that full operational model will be ready to use?
That's like the uh, question of the hour. I had hoped a long time ago, um. But it's taking us just a heck of an effort to get it across the finish line. Um, and we're hoping um, that we will actually present some preliminary results um, this month to our board um, in our, in our public board meeting in February here. Um, those results. We're still working on adjustments to baseline conditions, um, and and some of the components in the model. So there, I would still call them preliminary results, but we're getting very close.
When you say reporting to the board, is that about the cost, the model, what, what is, what is the
That's.
As we sit here now, as to what that report will cover?
Yeah, the report to the board in February is envisioned to cover um, our progress in developing the calcium three model and preliminary results of diversions and releases. Um. That we're seeing in the calcium three model that would actually include the new I T P terms and conditions um, on top of a uh, I'll say, you know, a twenty twenty four C V P S O P operations with the new operations rules in place. We will finish up building the calcium three model, quality controlling it all. Um, at this point in time, we are also adjusting our um, overall project cost estimate. Um, our last cost estimate was done in twenty twenty one. Um, so it is my understanding that the engineering team is, is looking carefully at that cost estimate and adjusting it. Um. And we anticipate kind of pulling these two together in like the April, May timeframe, um, having a new project cost estimate along with a new um, along with a full calcium three run with the I T P requirements and the state and federal reconsultation in there, um. And would be able to have a a new refined cost estimate for the project, including a per acre foot cost at that time.
Okay, and I have a couple more questions on this subject on the let's, let's assume hypothetically that all goes to plan. Does that mean, right, a final cost model and updated cost estimate in you know, April, June, December?
You know, I'm, I'm kind of speaking from what I have heard from the engineering team. Um, I'm not intimately involved in their changes in the cost estimate, um, and look at the cost estimate. Um, I think we're looking at like summer, like kind of early summer timeframe for a completely new. I shouldn't say completely new, an updated cost estimate, um.
Okay, thank you.
So, and I'll call that a comprehensive update, um, both, you know, looking at all of the cost factors for construction. Or we're adjusting our mitigation costs based on what we know. In the I T Ps and what we're envisioning, you know, in our, say, our other permits like our four oh four um. So we're kind of looking at our entire cost estimate. Um, to update it based on what we know today.
And specifically with respect to the. Um, I T P. The operations permit. Have you shared anything, has, have you, have the authority shared anything with project participants about, you know, the relative? Magnitude of the cost impact of that permit?
Um. I think we have generally. Shared that we believe there would be a slight reduction in. Diversions because of the flow dependent diversion criteria um and the change to ten thousand nine thirty at Wilkins Lou. Um. We have not shared specific numbers that I can recall. Um. I don't believe we shared specific numbers.
Okay, and is it, is it, am I right to understand that the reduction in diversions that you just described? Um, the authority expects that will have a corresponding increase in cost. The specifics of that relationship or the quantitative aspect of that relationship, you just haven't figured out?
I don't know that it will have like a direct. I don't, I don't know that it will have a direct correlation to an increase in cost um. Because it does really depend on how. A member manages their account in sites, um so um. If you. Uh, if you think of it this way, if you're managing your account as like a checking account where you're constantly putting water in and taking it out. Um. It has the potential to have a reduction um. Because you're using your account, you know, quite frequently. If you're managing your account as a savings account where you're putting water into sites and you're really saving it. You know, for those really dry year scenarios. It might have a less of a implication because you're probably running your account closer to full more often and thus. You know, you're. You're actually not using your account as frequently and it's sitting closer to full um. And so when those storms come in, you actually don't have as much space to put water, so it's, it's complicated, I don't think it like directly. I don't think it's. Possible to directly correlate to say. You know, an X percent reduction in diversions equals an X percent increase in costs um. It depends to some extent on how individual members utilize their accounts. Um, and some of that is reflected actually in the calcium modeling, the calcium modeling does assume different. Um. I'll say triggers for. How members utilize their accounts um. Based on input that we received um from our participants a number of years ago.
So I, I appreciate that it may not be a linear relationship and there may not be direct lines that. You can draw today or even when the modeling is done. Um, is it fair to say overall a reduction in the amount of water that sites can divert? Leads to an overall increase in the cost of that water?
Objection, misstates the witness's testimony.
Uh, Ms. Kenzie, you're muted.
Thank you, good, overruled, go ahead, Ms. Porset.
I think it, it's fair to say overall, it's most definitely not a linear relationship. And sometimes the relationships are. Quite complicated and. At times I'm surprised by how they seem a little counterintuitive um.
And then the, the, the last question on this subject, eh. When you talked about the full operational model of sites and calcium three um. Will that also include? Either already or the ability to change criteria based on an updated Bay Delta Water Quality Control Plan?
Um, we are. We are looking at. What components? Would be included from a healthy rivers perspective, healthy rivers and landscapes um. We're initially building the calcium three model to complete our federal consultation uh under federal E S A. So we have to be cognizant of. The requirements under federal E S A is to what is envisioned as a future project um. Ultimately, you know. We can, you know, we could build a lot of different things into a calcium model, um a calcium three model, so it's. I think right now it's hard to do. Sorry. My general response is not right now, um. Components of healthy rivers and landscapes will be in there in this version of the calcium three model um. That we were, are looking to produce in twenty twenty five here um. Uh, if and when we have kind of, or I shouldn't say if, but when we have more clarity um on a future uh Bay Delta. Update um. We could build that into the calcium three model, but we would want to. Work with D W R and reclamation to. See how best to represent that from a system wide perspective.
Um, when you say healthy rivers and landscapes, that's the voluntary agreements?
Yes.
And. Is there a reason that the authority has gone ahead modeling the voluntary agreements, but not modeling a regulatory update to the Bay Delta Plan? Or including that in the calcium three model?
Um. As of, well, we haven't, we have not made any final decisions on this, um. We are, as I mentioned previously, we're building the calcium three model for. A whole number of reasons, because the industry is really transitioning to calcium three. But very. Near term. We need to use that calcium three model for our federal E S A consultation. And thus, um, we are building our initial version of the calcium three model. In a way um that we would utilize for that consultation um and that is discussions that we're having. Right now with U S Fish and Wildlife Service and NIMPs um. To identify. Under federal E S A. What is reasonably foreseeable and what is in the baseline of that calcium three model um. So it's, you know, our very immediate. Purpose and use of the calcium three model. Is our. Federal E S A consultation under section seven um. After that, you know, there's a lot of things that we can build into calcium three and do with calcium three um to simulate for the future.
And, sorry, do you have a timeline for the federal E S A consultation process?
Uh, we are. Uh. I think I reported on it in my orig- in my um original testimony and I don't remember the number to that. Uh, I think most likely from that original report, we're a couple months behind schedule. I think we're hoping um to finish up the model and um submit. Have reclamation actually approve and submit a biological assessment to the services. Um, I want to say in the April, May timeframe.
Thank you, um, Ms. Kenzie, I. Tried to stop at ten thirty and here we are, um, I'm at a good place to take a break, I've got probably another half hour or so to go.
Great, thank you, I was going to ask, let's go ahead and take a ten minute break, we will return at ten fifty. Thank you.
All right, it is ten fifty Ms. Cott, are you ready for us to go back on the record?
All set, thank you.
Great, of course, we'll make sure we have our witness and Ms. Chester, we do, wonderful, and with that, back to you, Mr. Boucher.
Thank you. Can we put Ms. Forsyth's PowerPoint, I think it's sites three, three zero on the screen? A couple of questions about that, Ms. Forsyth. We could start with page ten, please. And this is, Ms. Forsyth, this is with respect to the operations I T P. You say under the first bullet point here in terms of the species that were in the application, identify both spring run and winter run Chinook salmon. And with the note that the spring run are in the Sacramento River system and no similar explanatory note for winter run. I'm just curious if there's a difference in the geographic scope of the analysis with respect to those two species.
I can't entirely speak to that question. But we were specific on this because there is spring run now as a result of the San Joaquin River Restoration Program in the San Joaquin River, and those have different protections under at least federal E S A for those species.
Okay, I appreciate that, that was my guess, I just wanted to make sure. And is it correct that when you describe the Sacramento River system here, that includes, you know, the Delta and through the Delta for winter run and spring run Chinook salmon, correct?
That is correct, yes.
If we could go to the next page, page eleven. The first bullet point here describes the submission of the supplement to the operations of the I T P. There are, I think, and please correct me if I'm wrong about this, but four exhibits that you had that were submitted with the authority's case in chief here. Three twenty six to three twenty nine, the deal with the completeness letters and the supplement. Is that the, do those documents describe the universe of the changes and kind of written correspondence between C D F W and sites on these matters?
I do not. I would say no, there was. As we went through the as C D F W went through its analysis on the I T P and as the authority was working with C D F W on that, there were a number of materials exchanged between the organizations, I believe. You know, I don't have, I have not cited all of those because there's quite that was exchanged back and forth, so I think that answers your question, this is not it is not, those documents are not the full, I'll say admin record for the I T P development. They were just used to kind of illustrate the process and the timelines and some of the key components of outcomes and decisions. But there was, you know, inherently in really detailed discussions, there was a lot of exchange of material between C D F W and the authority.
In terms of conditions or operational plans, do those documents consist of kind of the universe of changes that sites proposed or that C D F W required?
I think I have the same answer. You know, those are the outcome documents. Those are the I'll say kind of final documents of exchange, but there was, they definitely are not the the universe of the dialogue that we had back and forth with agencies.
All right, thank you, if we could go to the next page, please. It's now page twelve. The covered activities. And I apologize if I just missed this as I went through. Is that a defined term somewhere in the permit?
Uh, I believe so, let me.
And is that three twenty nine that it's defined in exhibit three twenty nine or a different document?
Wait, give me just a second here. And it's defined in the I T P itself, so the I T P is sites two ninety eight. And it is defined on page four of that document under the heading, the very first line under the heading project description.
Thank you, I appreciate that, all right. And then if we could go to page fourteen of the presentation, please. So am I right in understanding your testimony, Ms. Forsyth, that the chart on the right half of this slide depicts the existing adaptive management program process plan as sites envisions it?
That is correct, and that comes from sites one, three, six.
Okay. And you explained at the beginning that, or not at the beginning, you explained during your presentation that sites intends to work with state or federal Fish and Wildlife Agencies or other regulators, whatever's appropriate. As part of this adaptive management plan, can you show me like which box that interaction with C D F W or Fish and Wildlife Service falls in in terms of this process?
It, I think it really, it falls both in the adaptive management science team box along with the adaptive management committee. So the science team would be developing study activities and monitoring plans, engaging in feedback from the agencies on that, and that's kind of that arrow that uh, sorry, that first bullet of exchange of information with other programs, but also kind of the arrow that goes over to those three boxes where the science team is engaging with other programs out there to look at get their feedback, but also look at how we could collaborate together in conducting monitoring and science. To help meet all of our goals or to expand our efforts with, you know, some of their efforts. In the adaptive management committee, the agencies are also on the adaptive management committee, it doesn't specify it here in this box, but they would look at that final study or monitoring plan and then forward to the authority board now. This is a little bit unusual because it's coming out of the I T P, so it would have to meet the I T P requirements. You know, there's only so much that the science team or the adaptive management committee can do to adjust the study efforts, because ultimately it has to meet the I T P requirements and it has to be approved by C D F W per the terms of the I T P before we undertake that activity.
Okay, so that, I think that's helpful, let me make sure I understood that. Am I right to think about this as, right, C D F W or potentially other agencies, I don't mean to limit it, but C D F W is like another entity in the green boxes and has a role on the adaptive management committee, the middle blue box, right?
Yes.
Okay. The top box is the Authority's Governing Board. And the first bullet point there says that it reviews, approve, review, approve, modify, or deny recommendations. Under what circumstances can the governing board deny recommendations from the adaptive management committee related to the I T P?
Ultimately, the authority board has to comply with the I T P, so they could deny a recommendation if they felt for some reason it didn't comply with the I T P or didn't go through an approval process from C D F W. Like if the process was kind of faulty from the start, the authority board can say, no, we're not going to fund this. You need to coordinate and get approval from C D F W, go back and start again and get approval. It could, the authority board could say, you know, these components of the study are required per the I T P. These are extra that go above and beyond the requirements of the I T P and we just don't, for whatever reason, we just don't want to undertake these extra pieces. So we're going to ask you to reformulate the study to just meet the I T P requirements. You know, so I think ultimately the authority board has to implement the I T P. We are envisioning that we'll implement the I T P with other partners in the system, you know, taking on potentially broader study activities that have broader benefits than just the I T P. But the authority board could come back and say, we're not quite ready for that. Just formulate the study around the I T P and that's it.
So I guess I, the first part of your answer dealt with a situation where the board looked at the proposed monitoring, right, whether it had been approved by C D F W or not, and said, this is insufficient in our view to comply with the I T P, go try again, and could reject a recommendation on that basis, is that right?
That's correct, yes.
Is there any basis on which the board can reject a recommendation, well, let me, before I ask that, the second piece, right, I understood that the board could reject recommendations if they included things that weren't required by the I T P, so long as they left intact the stuff that was required by the I T P, is that right?
That's correct, yes.
Is there any basis where the board can reject a recommendation that is consistent with the I T P? Right, setting aside that bucket of situations where there's additional stuff in there that would be discretionary?
I don't envision the that the authority has to implement the I T P, so if it complies with the I T P, it's not adding on extra things, you know, I would envision that the authority board would need to approve that study plan and move forward with the contractual components of that. Functionally, the authority board you know, needs to approve work that's in its budget. You know, so before staff will expend money on an activity or go contract for an activity, you know, the authority board has a fiduciary responsibility to say yes or no on that. So I would not envision the authority board to reject something that complies with the I T P, they would, I would envision that they would improve it, fold it into the budget, direct staff to go contract, execute contracts and make it happen.
So is it fair to then to think about the I T P requirements that are going to be or that the authorities proposing to implement through adaptive management as sort of unique in the adaptive management in that there's this less discretion for the authorities board to reject anything from the management committee or the science team if it's related to the I T P, but outside the I T P, they can deny whatever recommendations they so choose.
But I think there is less discretion when it comes to those components that are you know, that fulfill I T P requirements, I mean, the authority needs to stay in compliance with its I T P, so. I agree there that there is less discretion when it comes to I T P components. While we want to run them through the adaptive management program to make sure we're getting really diverse input on the study plans and the monitoring efforts. And thinking about how we implement those, I think there's you know, the authority needs to comply with the I T P. And there's less discretion to reject those.
The, the second bullet point on the left deals with the timeframe of implementation. And you conclude saying it's likely that the monitoring and studying would inform terms of a future permit rather than resulting changes to operations prior to twenty thirty nine. Is it the authority's view that it can change operations through its adaptive management process in ways that would be inconsistent with the I T P?
Not at our sole discretion, we need to work with C D F W on those to you know, whether it's a clarification or amendment or a reconsultation under the I T P depending on what that change, you know, the magnitude of that change and what that looks like.
So any change in project operations has to happen through a change or reissuance of the I T P permit?
Any change that would be inconsistent with the I T P has to we have to coordinate with C D F W on that to figure out the appropriate change to the I T P, so I don't want to say it's always going to be reconsultation. You know, if we're making a very minor change, that's really kind of like a clarification of something that was uncertain, that could be done in a much simpler way, but we would, we would work with C D F W to figure out what they feel best in the context of state E S A and their requirements of how that change would materialize. Meaning, is it just a very minor change and it's a clarification, or does it require an amendment or, you know, potentially an entire reconsultation because it's so substantial?
And when you say coordinate with or work with C D F W, I mean, I appreciate your job is to be collaborative with those agencies, but ultimately they have to approve any change that would change the conditions or operations as described in the I T P, correct?
That is correct. If it's inconsistent with the I T P, this is all assuming that that change is inconsistent with the I T P.
And if we could, oh, excuse me, if we could go to page sixteen briefly. When you describe the operational exchanges, are these exchanges with Shasta, exchanges, some different exchanges, what are encompassed here?
Um, we have exchanges with Shasta and then exchanges with Oroville. We're covered in the E I R and in the I T P.
Okay. And I think that answers my questions on those, I have a couple more questions, we can take the presentation down.
I should also mention, Mr. Busher, we have what we call in river exchanges. And those are generally results and benefits up in Shasta, but they're happen between the authority reclamation and say G C I D or others to leave water in the Sacramento River and use water out of sites instead. Those would also be covered by that term.
Thank you. So in the conditions for approval and Ms. Forsyth, so you know, and I'm happy to have it on the screen if it's helpful, I'm looking at paragraph thirty five of your written testimony at page ten.
Be great, Ms. Mullins, if you were to bring that up, just so everybody has it.
Sites three seventeen, three one seven. Starting on line five, you described condition of approval number eight and the, all the subparts that fall within that. Can you describe what actions the authority is taking before operations begin with respect to condition of approval eight?
There are quite a number of subconditions in condition of approval eight, as reflected in my testimony here around winter run, spring run Chinook, white surgeon, and then some of our delta, our Longfin and Delta smelt species. I would have to look back at the I T P itself to identify the specific requirements prior to operations, but the I T P itself is specific in all of these subconditions listed here in my testimony on what needs to be done prior to operations. So yeah, there's a, there's a number of those that need to be done prior to operations or need to be started prior to operations to collect baseline conditions and baseline information.
Okay. If we could go down to page twelve, the top half of the page, it's paragraph thirty seven in the testimony. So on the line seven, you explain that the conditions of approval eight point seven through eight point eleven are multi-year efforts and that the authority going down to lines nine through eleven, the authority is currently anticipating six years of study and monitoring during project operations. Am I correct in understanding that to mean that for those conditions of approval, eight point seven to eight point eleven? That's designed to, you know, begin those studies during operations. So those studies are designed to occur during operations?
Um, so that is a general statement. There are a number of subconditions to each one of those conditions of approval in the I T P. I guess line eight probably should say, should have said multi-year efforts prior to and during project operations because a number of those subconditions are required to begin prior to project operations to collect baseline data and then a number of them do have continued monitoring and science activities during project operations. So it's a, it's intended to be kind of be a general statement that probably should have included mention of efforts during or prior to project operations.
And other than to the extent that those efforts are specified in the I T P itself, well, let me, let me try this this way. For those things that are supposed to occur before operations begin, am I correct in understanding your testimony that those are specifically identified in the I T P?
That is correct. But I T P is throughout section eight or I'll say condition of approval eight of the I T P. I guess I feel like it's very specific on what conditions need to be implemented prior to operations. And then what conditions are implemented during project operations or continue during project operations? I think the I T P is pretty specific on the timing of the study activities and when they have to be initiated relative to project operations.
And am I correct in understanding your testimony that generally condition eight involves monitoring, research, study as opposed to like restrictions on actual operations?
I think I believe condition eight is focused on monitoring science and study actions and the restrictions on operations come in in condition nine and the take minimization measures.
Thank you. We could go down to paragraph forty one on page fourteen, last page. So in this paragraph, you describe a proposed water right term that would require the authority to comply with the operations incidental take permit. Is that an accurate high level summary here?
Uh, yes, yeah.
And that is as distinct or opposed to conditions or water right terms that had specific, for example, diversion criteria in them rather, whether from the I T P or elsewhere, correct?
Yes.
And the, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I was gonna share that you know, our, the authority's thinking on this term is that, you know, as demonstrated in that I T P itself in condition eight, there is a lot of monitoring and study. And our understanding of the species is evolving as we gain scientific knowledge and information. So the term is intended to reflect that it's intended to reflect that evolution. But as we gain understanding of the species, you know, the diversion criteria may change in future I T Ps and we would want that to be the controlling document for the protection of the species. Yeah, there may be, there may be things, requirements in the I T P that aren't going to change over time. That could be, that aren't driven by science and those components that could be things that are potential terms in our water right and as a slight precursor, you'll see some of those in our rebuttal testimony. But those things that are science based around the species and we know the science is just continuing to evolve. We feel referencing back to the I T P to allow for that evolution of science over time is the most appropriate way to address it rather than trying to fix those terms today and they may end up evolving in the future.
You, you noted and you say in your testimony at line six and seven that the science related to fisheries and the Delta Sacramento River Bay Delta ecosystem continues to evolve. Do you agree that the authority has an obligation to act based on the best available science that exists now available?
We, I think we have to be thoughtful and careful of how how vetted is that science? You know, so we don't react as every kind of maybe conference presentation comes out and, and starts to change, but as we receive and have developed, you know, peer reviewed in kind of a body of evidence, then we should be reacting to that body of evidence. So it, I think at times kind of how we define best available could differ between individuals. But I believe that the authority does have an obligation to react based on best available science. And we see that as a body of evidence that's coming together. Not necessarily, you know, one presentation from a con, conference may not necessarily be best available science.
But it's correct that, right? Available means what we know now, even recognizing that we may learn a whole lot more in the future, correct?
Yeah, I believe, yeah. Yes.
Do you agree that the incidental take permit and, and the work that the authority did with C D F W in that context was focused on the originally four, now five state listed species?
Yes, our I T P work was focused around the species that we received take for.
And there are other species in the Bay Delta ecosystem or the Sacramento River that were not covered by the I T P, but that may be impacted by the project in some way, correct?
I, yes, and I believe that was, you know, to, our feeling was that that was disclosed and discussed in the final E I R.
And
That covered more species than just those that are state and federally listed.
Certainly. And you say at lines eleven and twelve that the permit terms for the diversion or release of project water for the protection of fish and aquatic resources is best left to C D F W. Are those the fish and aquatic resources, the, the endangered ones that C D F W looked at?
Yes, those that C D F W looked at in the I T P. But we also had C D F W comments and adjustments were made in response to their comments in the final E I R.
Okay. Those comments from C D F W in the final E I R or right future similar ones that are outside of the I T P process, those are not legal conditions on the authority's conduct, correct?
Objection to the extent it calls for a legal conclusion.
Objection is noted, but go ahead and respond, Ms. Forsyth.
You're asking, are the comments from C D F W something that the authority is legally required to comply with? I'm sorry, I think I lost the question.
Yeah, let me, let me try it this way. You say C D F W, I'm sorry, the authority says that C D F W has analyzed the impacts on these endangered species in the I T P and that the I T P conditions should be the only condition in the water right permit for the diversion and release of project water, right? The, I think you call those the science based conditions in the water right permit. And I'm trying to understand what to do with the species that are potentially impacted but are not endangered and where there, the protection for them falls in the authority's conception of water right condition in C D F W's work.
Objection, not a question.
Can you help me understand that?
See that, sorry, I was waiting just a second there to make sure that that I could answer the question. So I see that as following, as falling within the analysis in the final E I R and while, and this would really need to be a fisheries expert to speak to this and I believe we've had some testimony already on this, that the author, the project does have the potential to impact those species. We didn't find any of those impacts to be significant and requiring mitigation of, outside of, I believe some requirements for Delta smelt around water quality monitoring, if I'm recalling correctly. So I guess my thinking on that, I'm not articulating it very well, is that they were covered in the final E I R. If the impacts had been found to be significant, then we would be obligated to admit, implement mitigation measures for those species, but we did not find those impacts to be significant except for, I believe, some Delta smelt impacts around water quality.
So is the authority's, is the authority's position that the only appropriate conditions on operations in its water rights permit are those that C D F W has identified in the incidental take permit?
Objection vague. It's unclear what you mean by appropriate.
But once the authority would endorse?
Well, and I understand where you're going, Mr. Busher, because I have the same question, which is I'm trying to think if we can pin this down. Can you, Mr. Busher, can you phrase the questions in terms of which I think you, you just tried to do in terms of whether the authority would object to certain conditions?
Sure. Ms. Forsyth, I think we started this line of questioning about this paragraph, right? That the authority believes the conditions should be those identified by C D F W in the I T P. Or, or the authority believes the condition should be compliance with the I T P rather than, right? Compliance with any specific flow condition or diversion criti, condition that may be found in the I T P. Is that right?
That is correct. I will note that the authority must also comply with other applicable state and federal law, so we could see additional conditions in our federal ESA consultation that does consider additional conditions um in our federal ESA consultation that does consider um I want to say essential fish EFH. Um, I think it stands for essential fish habitat where we look at some of our non-listed fish um in that federal component. Of course, I think that's, if I recall correctly, I think that's around those species of commercial value um. So there are other, this is not the only thing, what I'm trying to say is this is not the only thing that the authority will have to comply with. Um, we will have to comply with federal ESA. Um, if there are conditions in our master stream bed alteration agreement, um. You know, we would have to comply with those. We will have to comply with state and federal law. This was provided here um to be to identify, I think, you know, generally what you said, that the authority feels putting specific diversion criteria into the permit does not allow for the evolution of science um to occur. If we have to go change our permit every time we get a new ITP, um we could end up with a lot of conflicting requirements that don't end up in the best interest of the species and aren't following best available science.
So let me this way, because I, the last sentence, if we scroll down just a little bit, lines thirteen through seventeen, I think addresses this conflict question that you're raising or conflict point um. The only way that those things would conflict in the future is if the authority was seeking a less protective condition in a new ITP than existed in its water rights permit, correct?
I don't think that's the case. Um, if we find for some reason that the flow-dependent diversion criteria hypothetically is not having the intended outcome and we need to make adjustments to that. Um, if that's in our permit, but yet CDFW, or excuse me, in our water rate permit, but yet CDFW has said that's not having the outcome we expected, we'd like to adjust it. We could end up with something in our water rate permit that does not follow best available science and we have since adjusted it to be something different. I don't know what. I mean, I can't speculate as to what that might look like um. But, you know, I think I think there is a possibility that we could end up with conflicts between the two.
So but wouldn't those conflicts only occur if the authority was trying to divert, right, more flow or flow more often? As opposed to, right, I mean, if the twenty thirty six comes around and the authority determines or CDFW determines you're diverting too much water under the flow diversion tool that we gave you and you need to divert less. Complying with divert less in the future wouldn't require a change in the water rights permit if that condition was in there, correct?
Objection.
I
compound, there are two questions in sequence.
Were there two? I don't recall.
I tried to ask one.
Let's try, uh, can you, can you just repeat the question, Mr. Busher?
Yeah, so the if we take the let's, let's take the Wilkins Slu one, because that's a little bit less complicated than the flow diversion tool um. Right, if ten years from now, the best available science dictates that the minimum flows at Wilkins Slu need to be fifteen thousand CFS, not ten thousand nine eighty or whatever the number is in the ITP, right? Sites could comply with sites could operate the reservoir consistent with that updated understanding of the science. Whether the water right app, water right permit had a condition of at least ten thousand nine hundred eighty or not, is that right?
I think what I am hearing is if we tweak the terms around the edges, sites could comply. And that may be the case, but if we have best available science, say twenty years from now, that says gosh, we get a better correlation of fish juvenile salmonid survival out of correlating with flows at the Calusa gauge and not Wilkins Slu. That would be, you know, in a future ITP for the project says, we should actually be correlating at Calusa gauge because it's closer to some of the habitat components. Then all of a sudden, we've got this Calusa gauge in our ITP and a Wilkins Slu gauge in our water right permit. And, you know, do those two align? I don't know. That's speculative as to what the future might look like. But those are the types of things that we are thinking about and we are concerned about um.
So I, I, I take your point that we may not know how right, X CFS at Calusa relates to Y CFS at Wilkins Slu? But the only way those become incompatible is if the new condition is ratcheting downward on protection. Is that right?
I don't think so. I mean, I think we could be looking, I, I mean, I really, it's hard to speculate as to what the future may hold, but I think, you know, there could be scenarios where um you know, where there's something different required in a different, you know, the the best available science is indicating that we should be looking at different indicators than what we're looking at today. Um, I don't know what that is. I can't speculate as to what that is um. But I wouldn't, you know, I don't think those indicators would be entirely driven by the authority trying to ratchet down its requirements and get more water, divert more water from the Sacramento River. I think that there could very well be science that indicates we are seeing, you know, different at, you know, you know, better ways to manage and address impacts and ensure survival of salmonids through the Sacramento River system than what we see today.
Um, is there any reason that you're aware of that the authority could not seek a change in any condition on its water rights permit? If the best available science indicated that that condition was no longer appropriate?
There is no reason, um, but changes are time-consuming and costly to the authority uh and to the those rate payers that pay for the water that the authority, including the environment um that the authority would be delivering.
So last couple of questions, then. You've mentioned a couple of times the environmental water that is to be stored in sites reservoir and and have equal status with the other sources of water that are stored there. Um, whose water is the environmental water?
It is watered, uh, in essence, uh, paid for by the California Water Commission through Prop One and managed um by CDFW um on behalf of the people of the state of California.
Give me one second here. Uh, one last question, Ms. Forsyth, um, are you aware of whether the ITP, we, sorry, let me preface this um. Back to our conversation about the cost analysis that the authority has performed in this context. Uh, are you aware of whether the ITP application had a kind of per-unit water cost analysis within it?
I don't believe so.
Are you aware of where that per-unit cost has been calculated, right, based on the application or the prior modeling that you described this morning?
Uh, the per-unit water cost had been calculated. This is jogging my memory, but I want to say in the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two timeframe, um, when we had developed our overall project costs. I'd have to go back and and look at that and recall the exact specifics and the timeframe, but it was um developed around that time um.
And do you know in what context it was developed?
It was developed in the context of looking at total project costs and um overall per acre foot costs along with benefits to our members. So it was developed in the context of helping our members um and participants understand um their, kind of what they're um receiving when they participate in sites reservoir.
Thank you. I don't, I'm sorry. Um, I don't have any further questions for Ms. Forsyth. Um, I don't know if others in the NGO group do.
Thank you, Mr. Busher, and I will look to um others in the coordinating NGO group. Do you have questions for Ms. Forsyth?
I, I think Mr. Busher has covered the issues that I uh would have covered. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schutz. And then are there other representatives from the uh tribal parties who have questions for Ms. Forsyth? Then I will look next to the delta parties. We'll start with uh Mr. Reese. I think you mentioned you had about fifteen minutes. Is that still accurate?
I think it's less, it's probably five. Uh, I'm not sure if Ms. Meserve will have any, but just a couple of just specific uh questions, Ms. Forsyth. Um, are you aware of any requirements from the ITP that require the authority to gauge in any real-time monitoring of water levels in the South Delta?
Uh, I'm not aware of any.
Okay, uh, are you aware of any requirements from the ITP that require the authority to gauge in any real-time monitoring of water quality uh in the South Delta?
I am not aware of any.
Um, you know, if the ITP, um, well, strike that, if there are, if there were um to be water level issues um in the South Delta at any specific um location, um, does the ITP require that the authority do anything um in addition to what it might already have been required to do?
Objection vague, water level issues.
Stage level issues, water level, water depths in the South Delta?
I'm a little confused by the question, um, but the ITP addresses impacts to state listed species. And I am not aware of water levels or water quality in the South Delta in combination with the sites project resulting in take of state list of state listed species.
Okay, that's fair enough. So is, is so as far as you know, from, from the ITP, it doesn't uh address or provide any additional um obligations on sites with respect to water levels or water quality in the South Delta, is that fair?
Objection compound.
Mr. Reese, can we just go through one at a time?
Sure. So as far as you know, does the uh ITP require or place any additional obligations on sites with respect to water levels in the South Delta?
I don't believe so with respect to water levels.
Okay, and same question with respect to water quality in the South Delta?
I don't entirely believe so, although I am recalling that the ITP has a term relative to temporary urgency change petitions um. And I would need to find that term specifically because um so there is a condition nine point nine in the ITP relative to temporary urgency change orders for delta water quality objectives. It's on page seventy. Excuse me, it's on page forty-three of sites two nine eight um.
Did you say seventy-three?
Uh, forty-three, excuse me. Forty-three of sites two nine eight. Um, sorry, it's forty-three of the PDF file. Oh, yep, it's also forty, forty-three of the hard copy and it's that term nine point nine. I, while this relates to water quality in the Delta, I believe that the specific uh sorry, I need to re-read this.
Ms. Mullen, can we please pull up sites two ninety-eight and go to page forty-three? Thank you.
That's that last term there, nine point nine.
Yes.
That requires the authority not to divert water to storage when there's a TUCP in place and the CBP and State Water Project are operating to those modified conditions and not meeting water quality at those specific locations identified in the term.
Okay, and those specific locations uh being Ria Vista, Edmonton, and Jersey Point, right?
Uh, yes, in addition, sorry, it's not a specific location, but Delta Outflow X two and the EI ratio.
Okay. Fair enough. Uh, just, just to follow up, so are you aware of any additional requirements or um from the ITP that uh speak specifically to the three interior delta, South Delta water quality locations in terms of um uh any requirements that would prohibit or alter sites actions if those uh stations are being violated?
Vague, the three interior locations have not been defined.
Are you aware of the, the three, the three interior, uh interior South Delta locations where water quality is um monitored or there's water quality requirements for EC levels?
A little bit of expertise that is beyond, you know, but beyond my specific expertise.
Okay, that's, that's fair enough. I can see what nine point nine says. Um. I don't have any further questions.
Thank you, Mr. Reese.
For this witness.
Uh, Ms. Meserve, did you have questions for Ms. Forsyth?
Good morning, um Ocean Reserve for San Joaquin County. I just had one follow-up question that kind of get uh pertaining to cost estimates that um Mr. Busher was asking you about. In terms of the affordability of the water. Um, that might be provided by this project. Um, I was looking at, I'm. Going to refer to sites two ninety nine, which is the construction ITP. And. Um, on page fifty four of that. Ms. Mullen, maybe.
Bring that up.
Pull it up just to make it easier for everybody. And so it's sites two ninety nine, page fifty four. And if you scroll down, please to the paragraph ten. And. Ms. Forsyth, my question was just pertaining to the. Thirteen thousand eight hundred and sixty eight acres of the Crotch Bumblebee Habitat. Um, plus the sites authority attempted to calculate the costs associated with that mitigation required in the ITP?
We have, trying to, um, so we have developed a cost estimate for implementing. Overall compensatory mitigation, um. That we expect, uh. That we know from the EIR, um. And at that time that we expected from the ITP and from our. Construction biological opinion, um. We have developed a cost estimate for that that was reflected in our overall project cost estimate. That I mentioned previously, um, we have not yet updated that cost estimate specifically. For these habitat numbers, however, I will say that two things, um. We, the ITP is based on our aerial mapping, um. And once we actually go out and do land cover cert, verify land cover surveys and then protocol level species surveys. We expect these numbers to go down and the impacts to be less. We were intentionally conservative in. The approach and the ITP to identify, um. A broader. Potential impact and then, you know, reduce those numbers down as we get land access. And then as you look at these numbers, many of these acres are species that coexist together in the environment. Um, and would be mitigated together, um, in the environment. Um, so for example, Swainson Hawk, um, foraging habitat and the bumblebee habitat, um. Are likely both grassland habitats, um, with some oak woodlands intermixed, um, bumblebee does need specific. Flowering resources, um. And so there may be additional efforts necessary. Say in an annual grassland scenario to plant flowering resources for bumblebee. But those acres would also overlap with potentially our Swainson's Hawk habitat. So. If you look at all of these habitat numbers in isolation, um, you know, these are. Very large numbers in isolation to mitigate. For the reservoir footprint. But many of these species will be mitigated together on the same acreage because they occur kind of in the same. Ecosystem types, um. So, long story short, we have a cost estimate of our compensatory mitigation costs. We have not updated that specifically for these ITP numbers. That's what we're actually doing now and starting on now. But we anticipate that many of these species will be stacked together in the mitigation because they already coexist in the environment together.
Thank you, Ms. Forsyth, um. Just in looking at the following page. Um, on page fifty five, please, if you don't mind. Um, at the the last indented paragraph or. Item regarding the bumblebee habitat. Um. Are you aware, Ms. Forsyth, of an existing CDFW approved mitigation or conservation bank? For Quatch Bumblebee?
I am not, well. We, I don't think we specifically looked, um, so I am not aware, um. This does say or shall provide equivalent in HM lands, which HM stands for Habitat Management Lands, and that would be. What we typically require call permitting responsible. So the ITP. identifies that we can purchase these credits through a CDFW approved bank, um. Or, um, provide equivalent in permitting responsible habitat management lands.
And have sites authority work to see if such lands, that amount of land. Um, indicated on the prior page, the, which may be an overestimate is available?
Not specifically for bumblebee, but bumblebee generally, uh, crushes bumblebee is generally. Uh, annual grassland species, um. Associated with annual grasslands, um, and a specific flowering resources for the bee, um. And we anticipate that there is sufficient annual grasslands to be able to mitigate for bumblebee.
And just one last question on the cost issue. Earlier, you mentioned that. There was a document that had estimated a unit cost back in the twenty twenty one, twenty two time period. Would you be able to refer me to that document?
Um, that document, it, uh. So we. Sorry, you said estimated a unit cost. What we did in that document was we. Looked at all of our EIR requirements along with our anticipated at that time ITP. And federal ESA requirements, and we came up with a cost estimate for. All of our compensatory mitigation. That cost estimate did assume stacking of certain species together, um, and so.
Ms. Forsyth, I'm sorry to interrupt. I actually, maybe I wasn't clear, but I'm actually referring back to the unit cost of water report that.
Oh, gotcha. I thought you were talking about unit costs for mitigation for certain species. Um, for unit cost of water, I could, and actually we just put all of this together because we received. Um, a PRA on it and, um. I just don't have it at the tip of my fingers, but we do have. We just put it all together in response to a Public Records Act request that. I'd be. I think I could share with you, um, I don't know if it's. I don't know what components of that are already included in. The. Records as part of this proceeding. I have not crosswalked those two, um.
Okay, um, yes, if that's something you could email to me or the hearing list, um, whatever the hearing officer thinks would be best, um. At your convenience, that would be helpful in our review. Thanks.
For clarification, the request was specifically for the twenty twenty one to twenty twenty two cost estimate, um. Can you clarify if the ask is for that report or other information?
What I heard, um, Ms. Forsyth tell, um, Mr. Busher was that there was a report that estimated the unit cost of water. And I was looking for that information. Um, to the extent there's broader information available, um, that probably would be helpful in parties looking at the public interest considerations for this project, so. Primarily, I was asking about the actual report that Ms. Forsyth mentioned, though.
And I'll just ask if you can share amongst yourselves or to the services as appropriate, but exclude the AHO and then we'll have, if it comes in, we'll. Use the normal processes for bringing in evidence for that purpose. But I'm, thank you for, um, encourage the sharing of information. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
Ms. Mazer, did you have any other questions?
No, thank you.
Thank you. Um, it is noon, but let me turn first. Mr. King, do you have questions for Ms. Forsyth?
Uh, yes, I do.
And do you have an estimate of how long?
Maybe fifteen, twenty minutes.
Um. Well, let's go ahead and and go forward with that, and then I'll see if we have redirect and then we can. We'll take a lunch break shortly after you're finished.
Okay, great. So I have questions on, um, uh, sites exhibit two ninety eight, so.
Ms. Mullen, if we can have.
Ms. Mullen, yeah, thank you. The magic lady. Thank you, Ms. Mullen. I forgot, I forgot the name. Uh, Ms. Mullen, bring up sites two eighty eight, page six. Um, yes, so if you go down to, um, definition, inclusive basin drain, scroll down a little bit. So, Ali, I'm Miss Forsyth, um, so, um, I just want to kind of clarify whether or not, um, the ITP has the definitions right? So on the definition, so you see, uh, on page six, it's defined inclusive basin drain. Is that right, Ms. Forsyth?
Uh, Ms. Forsyth, you're muted.
Yeah.
Excellent. Sorry, thank you, um. I'm not, I'm not sure if it's trying to define it very specifically or just generally help the reader understand. What is the exclusive basin drain, um.
And so did you, did, in your ITP, did you review these, this definition? Did sites the authority review this and see if it was correct?
Um, you know, we did review a draft of the ITP before it was finalized. And I'm sure I read this paragraph, but, uh. I generally thought it it helped the reader understand what they were talking about, what the clue space and drain is, yeah.
Okay, and so it cites it that is maintained by Reclamation District twenty forty seven. Um, do you know if that's correct?
I honestly don't, um, offhand, um.
Has the authority ever had any conversation with Reclamation District twenty forty seven?
That would be something that Mr. Robinett is best to speak to. I don't know offhand.
Do you know if there are any agreements between the authority and Reclamation District twenty forty seven?
I am not aware of any.
And the next, the next entity is called the Closer Basin Drain District. Do you know what the Closer Basin Drain District is?
I don't, this probably should say Closer Basin Drainage District, um, but I'm not. Uh. Yeah. I suspect it drainage.
And to your, to your knowledge, does the Closer Basin Drain District maintain the Closer Basin Drain?
I don't know specifically. These are things and topics that Mr. Robinett has been working on more closely than myself.
Does the authority have any agreements with the Closer Basin Drains just regarding the maintenance of the Closer Basin Drain? To your knowledge.
I am not aware of any.
Okay, do, do, to your knowledge, are are there parts of Closer Basin Drain that are not maintained by? Local reclamation districts and water districts, but by individual landowners?
I do not know the specifics, but it is my general understanding that there. Um, that that is the case.
And you, you know, that's the case with my property. Um, specifically regarding our discussions on the sandbar, I'm trying to get removed. Is that I, because, um, there is no one that maintains that. Is that your, do you have that recollection?
That is, that is my recollection of the discussions that you and I have had.
Great, thank you. And so the last sentence says the the CBD is gravity bed and it will convey water from the project. Uh, from the Donegan Pipeline that blends or agricultural runoff from the surrounding areas. Uh, into Sacramento River and Yolo Bypass. Do you believe that that is the correct statement? I mean, there's, okay, go ahead. I'm sorry.
I, yeah, so my understanding is that the clue space and drain is a gravity fed facility, um. That it will convey water for the project. Um, and that water would be blended in the Closer Basin Drain. With releases from the Donegan Pipeline shown here as DP. With agricultural runoff that exists in the drain, um. From the surrounding area that surrounds the drain and that water is conveyed down to the Sacramento River, um. And for the purposes of the project and ecosystem benefits, um, into the Yolo Bypass via the. Knights Landing Ridge Cut, which is abbreviated here, KLRC.
Doesn't, doesn't the Closer Basin Drain also convey water from all the infernal streams north of the Donegan Pipeline? And all the agricultural runoff that comes from, uh, that runs over the Davis Weir? Doesn't this, doesn't this exclude all the natural water that comes from the thermal streams?
Objection, compound.
Doesn't this, if, doesn't this, um, definition exclude? All the natural water from the thermal streams north of the Donegan Pipeline in its definition?
Not reflected in that sentence, I would agree with you, um. I think for the purposes of the ITP. It was intended just to kind of orient the reader of what. What facilities, locations, activities? Is the project utilizing in its operations, um.
Great, so Ms. Um, Smol, if you could turn to page three of the same document. So, Ms. Forsyth, uh, the second bullet point talks about, um, uh, doesn't the second bullet point, um. Describe the Glen Closer Irrigation District Main Canal? Is that what the definite, what this is a description of?
Uh, yes, that is correct.
And does it say it extends to Davis Weir and the Closer Basin Drain? Eight miles of Williams and then or sites a a lot, a latitude and longitude? Is that correct?
Uh, yes, that is what the document states, yes.
But it says it ends in the Closer Basin Drain. Is that correct?
Uh. Makes sense to see the Davis here, we are in the Closer Basin Drain, um, yeah, I mean, it. But it said, it says it extends.
In.
To the, yes, functionally it says it ends.
Right, okay. And so then, Ms. Mullen, if you scroll down a little bit, uh, where the definition of the lower Closer Basin Drain is. Um, so, Ms. Forsyth, um. Is this, this, the, the, the bullet point, um. The regarding the bullet point says the lower Closer Basin Drain is a previous existing conveyance, it conveys water. From the Donegan Pipeline to Knights Landing, the lower Closer Basin Rain starts east of Arbuckle. Is that correct? A certain sentence, is that a correct reading?
That's what this document says, yes.
Okay, and is that latitude, uh, longitude thirty nine oh three, uh, one five six? Is that correct? That's where it starts.
I had never verified that longitude. This was. I think this was intended, uh, to describe the section of the Closer. Basin Drain that the project would utilize in its releases from the Donegan Pipeline, um. But I cannot say that I verified the latitude and longitude.
Right, okay, but if we go back up, Ms. Mullen, can we go back up? So that's, but that's thirty nine oh three. Ms. Mullen, can we go back up to the Glen Closer, uh, a little bit farther? Ms. Mullin, can we go back up to the Glen Colusa, uh, a little bit farther up on the page where started? Uh, so there are the, the latitude, the, the, the latitude is thirty-nine point one one four three nine. Is that correct, Ms. Forsythe?
That's what the document says.
So, do you know if the I T P applies? In the latitude between thirty-nine point one one and thirty-nine oh three? What, what, how does, what happens to that portion of the cleavage and drain? Does the I T P apply to it, or? Why isn't, why isn't the continuous since the exclusive basin drain is continuous?
Objection, compound.
Try one question out of it. Mr. King, please.
Okay, does the I T P cover? The part of this base and drain between latitude thirty-nine point one one four three nine? And thirty, and thirty-nine point oh three one five six. Does the I T P cover that part of the exclusive base during?
Don't entirely. Understand what you mean by cover that. The I T P addresses. The potential for. The project to take, um, state listed species. As a result of operations of the project. Um, and those state listed species. Exist in the Sacramento River and the. Delta in the context of the operations I T P, um. So, I believe what this section is doing is. Trying to orient the reader, um, as to. A general geographic overview of what's happening and, and how. The facilities that the project is utilizing to divert water off the Sacramento River and thus return water. To the Sacramento River, um. I don't, we don't have. State listed. Fish species, um, or that I'm aware of, um. In the exclusive basin drain that required consultation. Under the I T P, um, so I think. It's just, it's hard. I don't, I don't quite understand the context of what you mean by covered, but the I T P covers project operations. As those. Result and take of state listed fish species. And in this case, they're located in the Sacramento River and the Delta.
Possible that flows in the exclusive basin drain between the latitude of thirty-nine point one one four three nine. And thirty-nine point oh three one five six can impact dissolve oxygen levels. Uh, methyl mercury, um, contaminant, other natural contaminants, pesticides, since. Water flows. Uh, down the cliff space and drain, and will make its way into Knights Landing and the Yellow Bypass from those flows. Is that a possibility?
Objection, calls for speculation.
I'm, uh, sustained, well, and, and I'm confused by the question, so I'm going to sustain on that basis. Mr. King, what are you? I'm not sure where we're going with this. Where?
There's no, it, the, the, the I T P doesn't, basically leaves out part of the exclusive basin drain. And I believe it's between the Davis Weir and the Bowls and, um, Bowls and Dam, um, and that. That, 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 those flows are going to impact dissolve, dissolve oxygen. Pesticide levels, other natural contaminants, the whole drainage regime of, uh, of the, of the. Uh, exclusive basin drain just north of Knights Landing and the, and the gate, and the Knights Landing Ridge Cut.
Well, let's, let's pause here. So, this proceeding is about the, the water right application and the related petitions, not the validity of the I T P.
Okay.
So I'm. Help me in the connection here. The, are you raising the concern that? The I T, I, I'm not sure. You tell me.
Yeah, so the, the water, it's how the, um, the, the water rights application is going to use the Donegan Pipeline. And the Donegan Pipeline is going to impact dissolve oxygen levels, how it intersects with this embrace and drain is going to impact dissolve oxygen levels. And also, um, natural contaminants, uh, the production of methyl mercury and hexanthromium, and then also pesticides. So the drainage regime, uh, upstream, the full drainage regime is important.
Okay, let's pause there. What is your question from Ms. Forsythe?
I just, that this, that the, all of the question is, is. Did, won't, won't, won't this portion of the, of the cleavage and drain between those two latitude points also impact? Of the, uh, mitigation, um, requirements for water quality?
Mitigation under what regime through the I T P?
For the I T P, because there's water quality and dissolve oxygen mitigation requirements and also monitoring.
Hearing Officer Kenzie, uh, we would object to inclusion of any of this commentary as, you know, potential testimony on behalf of Mr. King.
Understood. It's not under oath, so I, I understand that. Thank you. Uh, objection noted. All right. I'm gonna go ahead, Mr. King, and I think, I think we, I think we have the question narrowed down to a question about, um. Well, give it a shot, and then I will try if we can't get there from there.
So, doesn't, doesn't, um, this area of the cleavage and drain between the two latitude points that I mentioned? Potentially impact, um, the dissolve oxygen and, um. Contamination levels that need to be mitigated in the I T P, Ms. Forsythe.
Objection again for vague of need to be mitigated and, uh, assumes facts not in evidence.
That, well, that are, okay, is. Our dissolve oxygen and levels of, of natural contamin, can natural contaminant levels and pesticides part of the I T P?
So the consideration for, uh, the water quality. In the exclusive basin drain, wherever that water originates from, uh. Is included, uh, in the I T P is that water. Through the project operations. Is moved into the Sacramento River and into the Yolo Bypass. So if, for example, you look at. Um, page thirty-seven of the I T P. Um. There is a condition, uh. Eight point ten, um, that requires a water quality monitoring plan for pesticides. Um. At the Knights Landing Outfall Gates and also in the Ridge Cut, um. And there's some specificity as to what is required for that. There's also. In condition eight point eleven on page thirty-eight of the I T P. The authorities to prepare a detrimental metals monitoring plan. And submit that to C D F W and then monitor metals also. So, I believe that. Kind of irregardless of the specific location in the exclusive basin drain. That C D F W did consider how moving water. As a result of the project through the exclusive basin drain and out to the Sacramento River and down the Yolo Bypass. May move, um, pesticides and metals that exist, um. In the exclusive basin drain and has put. Some conditions in the I T P permit for the authority to implement around, um. Around the, around that.
Great, thank you. So I have one more question. It's a, um, exhibit, sites exhibit three hundred, page twenty-two. Ms. Mullin. Three hundred, page twenty-two. Um, okay, so down on the bottom.
If we could just start from the top here so I could orient myself as to what this is.
Yeah, I guess, it's, uh, go up to the top. It says page twenty-two. Yeah, this is the, uh.
Okay, this is C D F W's effects analysis. Okay.
And then model uncertainty. Then, uh, the last bullet point, um. Maybe I can ask Ms. Mullin, just, Ms. Ms. Forsythe, just to. Elaborate on this. It says, Cal, uh, my understanding is says that, um. Cal, calcium two doesn't include, um, any consideration of. Of inflows of into sites. Or outflow out of sites in, from, into funks and stone and, and. Out of sites into funks and stone corral creeks. Is that correct, correct, Mrs. Forsythe, Ms. Forsythe, if you can maybe explain that to me? What the limitations on calcium two are?
Ooh, um, the limitations of calcium two would be best addressed, um, by Mr. Whittington, um. And. Uh, I am aware that. Uh. Calcium two does not include funks and stone corral creeks in the model, um, but I can't. I really don't know to the extent which it represents the exclusive basin drain.
Okay. And it says that it's a static representation of agricultural deliveries and return flows. Uh, and there's no groundwater representation in calcium two. Is that what that says?
That is what that says, yes.
And then in calcium three, are you including funks, flows from funks, uh, in Stone Corral Creek, and then also? Um, the edge cooperation of this space and green and, and groundwater in calcium three?
Objection, compound.
Are you including groundwater in calcium three?
Uh. I am. Definitely not the expert to answer questions on the details of what is included in calcium three, but it is my understanding that. Calcium three does have a groundwater component to it, um. I don't, I really don't understand the details of it beyond a, a broad sense of it includes.
Okay, and do you know?
Interaction with groundwater.
How about do you know if includes, um, calcium three is going to include flows in and out of funks and stone corral creeks?
Objection, witnesses stated that she lacks the expertise and foundation.
All right, well, thank you. I, I'm done. Thank you, Ms. Kenzie. Thank you, Ms. Forsythe.
Thank you, Mr. King. And my understanding is we do not have Mr. Ornbound on the line today. Anyone?
I think that's right.
Thank you. So I believe with that, um, Ms. Chester, will you, do you have redirect for the witness and how much approximately?
I believe I have very brief redirect. I'm wondering if we can come back to it after the lunch break.
That's fine with me, um, so let's go ahead and do that. It is twelve twenty-four. Let's go ahead and take a full hour, and we will come back at, we'll just call it one twenty-five. How about that? Thank you. Oh, please do log out and log back in and, and zoom, or you will be. Forced to do so, and I will see you then. One twenty-five. Thank you.